We've already run into an issue. Normally, I would have you stand for the pledge of allegiance to start the meeting. However, as you look up, there's no flag. So, we will not do that. But what I would like you to do is please stand for a moment to start the meeting. And actually, I'd like you to join me in a moment of silence, reflection, and remembrance to honor all those towns and residents and other loved ones we've lost since we've last met. Thank you. Please be seated. Warning for the Town of Townsend 2023 Annual Meeting. The legal voters of the Town of Townsend are hereby notified and warned to meet at Dutton Gym in Townsend located at 2030 Vermont Route 30 on Tuesday, March 7th, 2023 at 9:00 a.m. to act on the following articles. At this point, I'm supposed to read the entire warning to you. If there's no objection, I'll refrain from that. That is because some people might not have the warning in front of them. If you don't have one, please cozy up to your neighbor. And actually, they're at the back of the, at the entrance if you need one. No objection to reading it? Not reading it? Thank you. Again, welcome to the Townsend Town Meeting in Dutton Gym, our first time. Town meeting is a special tradition, and I'm honored to be a part of it with you. This special gathering, this is a special gathering after an unfortunate hiatus, and I'm glad you can attend. I would like to extend a special welcome to those who are new to Townsend and have never attended a town meeting before. It has been a while since we've done this, so please bear with us as we shake off the rust. Let us review some of the information that is required for town meeting. My name is David Lebo. Now, I'm supposed to have this out, but it doesn't fit anymore. My name is David Lebo. It is my privilege to serve as your town moderator for the past year, and I will continue serving until a new moderator is chosen, maybe as soon as Article One. Robert's Rules is the basic rules of order for this meeting. The role of the moderator is to keep the meeting organized and answer any procedural questions. Please ask any clarifying questions if you, before we vote. You have the right to challenge any decision the moderator makes if you feel the ruling is improper. Voters should check in at the entrance of the gym and receive a ribbon. This must be worn when you vote to identify you as a registered voter. Please leave your ribbons when you leave the gym at the end of the meeting in order to save tax dollars. Non-residents are not allowed to vote. They are allowed to participate in discussion if the town allows with a two-thirds vote. When a motion is on the floor, I will try to call on hands as they're raised. When called upon, please stand and state your name before speaking. Please speak loud and clear. We have a microphone that will be passed around if you can't get to the microphone in the center. All motions and remarks should be addressed to the moderator. There should be no discussion between residents. Articles must be moved and seconded and then restated by the moderator before discussion may begin. Articles may be amended, and amendments amended once with voting to proceed from the last proposed amendment in reverse order. Debate may be cut off with a two-thirds majority, and if it's passed, no other amendments can be made. Calling the question when not having the floor will be ruled out of order. You may speak once per motion until all others have had a chance to speak unless a direct question is asked. You are only allowed to speak twice per article unless the rules are suspended with a two-thirds vote. There will be no personal attacks. You will be ruled out of order, and the constable can throw you out, and you can get a $200 fine. During elections, if there's no objection, I will allow only the person nominated to give a brief introduction and background. When voting by paper ballot, please come up through the center of the aisle and then exit the sides. And if you cannot get to the ballot box, please raise your hand, and we'll bring the ballot box to you. Please turn off your cell phones and pagers. We will not be taking a break for lunch this year. There's grab-and-go snacks in the back provided by Jen Hoyt, Katie Moreau, Bread From the Earth, and the ladies from Town Hall. This meeting is being recorded by Brattleboro Community Television. You can watch it on Channel 1079 or online at the BCTV YouTube channel worldwide. When speaking, please stand up, state your name, speak directly into the microphone that viewers in the room can hear you. Thank you. And I apologize if I have a Cindy Brady moment. Please try to snap me out of it. This has been a long time since I've done this. Introduction of the Select Board up front. We have Sherwood Lake, Steve Frisk, Rob Wright, Catherine Morrow, and Robert Swiger. And Connie, in the back, running the show. Okay, papers. In the back, all I saw was the 2023 Education District Annual Report, if you wanted to pick that up. Other announcements, bathrooms, since we've never done this before, the bathrooms are through that door. There's two upstairs, and there's two down the stairs. Okay, if I hear, I have no other announcements, and if there's no objections, I think we'll move on to Article One. We will be having, wait, hang on. We will be having guests come. Supposedly, State Representative Emily Long and State Treasurer Mike Pichek will be stopping by to say a few words. Senator Nader Hashim was supposed to stop by, but he came down with COVID, and so he apologized, and he will not be coming today. Okay. Article One. How are we doing? We okay? To choose a moderator for the ensuing year. I will now entertain motions for moderator. I got two nominations. You seconded. Thank you for the endorsement. Any other nominations for moderator? You sure? It's a once-a-year palm sweater. Come on. No? Okay, I gotta go here. Then I have to say, if there's no objections and hearing no more nominations, I declare the nominations closed and instruct the clerk to cast one ballot for David Lebo for moderator position. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Thank you very much for the endorsement. I appreciate it. The senator is, I mean, the House, Emily's not here yet? She said she'd be here early. Negative. Okay, so let's move on to Article Two. To act upon the July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022 Independent Auditor's Report. I will take a motion. If you don't know what to do, the motion is usual. I, I, there you go. Move to approve the auditor's report for those dates. Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Okay, this is what I'd like you to do for the clerk taking records. Can, when you make a motion and you second it, could you yell out your name too? Because I know a lot of your faces, but I forget your names. So, did you get it? Okay, thank you for that. And Eugene made the motion. Okay. Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Independent Auditor's Report from July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022. Discussion. Anybody have any discussion? Would we like to discuss that at all? Hearing no discussion. There is a motion before us to approve the July 1st to 2021 to June 30th, 2022 Independent Auditor's Report. A yes vote passes that motion, a no vote defeats that motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. The motion passes. We'll now move on to Article Three. To see what salaries the town will vote to pay its various officials for the ensuing year. Town Clerk, $40,180.86. Town Treasurer, $32,301.36. Select Board, one chair at $1,200, and four members at $4,000. The Town Clerk Assistants and Casual Labor at $1,590. I will entertain a motion. So moved. That's good. You have to repeat it. That's fine. Second?
Second.
Charlie? Thank you. Okay. Moved and seconded. Discussion. Irv, wait. Did everybody hear the question? Go ahead. Uh-oh. I, I'm here to just relay information. I believe it's $1,000 each, but I want to, yes. Understood that it could be confusing, but that's not, it's $1,000 for the four members. $1,000 each for the four members. Yes, sir? Yes.
Andy Snelling. Given that, you know, we're looking and we've seen a lot of things, I wanted to bring out and emphasize how important the town treasurer is to maintaining and keeping the town records in order. I don't know whether anyone has been following it, but Town of the Northwest, Norwich, has been having considerable problems, and it's not unusual in the state. I mean, not too many years ago, Putney had some serious problems because they had poor record-keeping in the treasurer's office. We're, we're very fortunate for this past year and several years prior to have had Elaine Hill serving in that capacity, and hopefully she will continue to volunteer, not volunteer, but to serve again coming forward. It's an important position, and I note here that the town clerk and the town treasurer, there's quite a discrepancy in salaries. And recognizing that in order that we can attract and maintain a competent and qualified person in that role, I would offer an amendment to the motion to increase the town treasurer's salary to be equivalent to the town clerk's salary. Thank you.
Who was that? Bob. Okay, it's, we now have an amendment on the floor. That's what we, we will discuss now. It's to increase the town treasurer's salary to $40,180.86. Yes, ma'am. Discussion? Uh, no, to the microphone. It just makes it easier. And, and name, name. We know what town you're from.
I'm Eileen Fahy, and I wanted to know if the number of hours that the town treasurer works are equal to the number of hours that the town treasurer works.
Do we have an answer for that?
Yes, the answer to that is 28 hours a week for both of them.
Any other discussion on the amendment?
Phoebe Connolly. Has this salary stayed the same over the years, or does it also consider inflation, et cetera, in the idea of looking for an increase? Has that been considered over the past years?
The town clerk, or town treasurer's salary has been giving, given raises commensurate with all other positions in town.
Just looking at the past numbers, it did go up 2%. All the salaries, not the chair or the members, not the select board, but the clerk, treasurer, and casual labor went up about 2% from what we voted to last year. So it does, it does increase with the other salaries. Any other discussion on the amendment? Yes? Yep, go ahead.
This would probably be better for Elaine to answer, but I was just told that you were looking for more time, more hours. Is that correct?
I was?
Yeah.
No.
You're not. Okay.
Don't talk.
I mistake. The difference in working hours between the clerk and the treasurer, the clerk works more hours than the treasurer does.
The clerk, he just said the clerk works more hours than the treasurer. Do we know that? Do we know the difference?
I work 28, and then every other, and then I stay open till 6 on the nights before school board, uh, select board meetings, so those are my hours.
That's the difference.
Is Elaine here?
Yeah, she is.
26, I believe she said. 26? Yes? Okay. I, I'm just here to moderate this meeting. You guys have to kind of, kind of work it out yourself here. I don't have all the information when you ask questions. That's not my job. So, yes, in the back? You gotta stand up, state your name, come to the microphone. You want a microphone. It's okay. Sorry. We want to hear you.
Laura Richardson. I just want to say that I think Anita Hill is doing a hell of a job, and I really appreciate the fact that she's doing it. And perhaps she is entitled to more money. I'm not sure about that, just because I don't have all of the facts and figures in my head. But I do know that the town clerk's office pays for itself, in a sense. Last, this past year, the town clerk's office brought in over $40,000 in fees and things of that sort. So, in a sense, it's not costing us as much to pay her, in a sense, as far as I can tell, because it's kind of covering itself. So I just wanted to throw that out there in the mix and have people mull that over.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Yes, sir? Speak loud or come on up to the microphone, please.
Hi, my name's Dale West. I have the question, not to say is, would Elaine be able to work more hours? Is the job requiring more time? Would it be more efficient to add more pay for more hours, to say? Or is it, is it, I'm just trying to figure out the reasoning behind the raise besides just evening it out. Is it a benefit for us to actually raise and maybe get a few more hours, a better constructive work being done to help us out with a lot of that?
Elaine?
Honestly, I'm okay with the salary that the select board has determined that I should get because, I don't talk loud. Okay. Technically, I'm okay with the salary that the select board has decided I should get for my 26 hours a week because I'm also the tax collector, of which there's a $5,000 in my budget to pay. So then, if you add the 32 and the 5, that's 37. So it comes much closer to what the town clerk is making. And no, I'm not willing to come in more than the 26 hours a week that I'm currently working. Thank you very much.
Okay, so we have an amendment before us. Is there further discussion? Okay, any other discussion? There it is. Yes, sorry. Loud.
Jean McIntyre. Are we just, we're not voting on Article 3 now, right? We're just voting on the amendment?
Correct. We're discussing, we can only discuss the amendment about increasing the salary of the treasurer right now. We'll vote on that, and then we'll go back to the main amendment. I mean, the main motion. And then if you want to amend it again, you can.
Okay.
Yes. Any other discussion on the amendment? Okay, hearing no other discussion. We have an amendment before us. The amendment is to increase the treasurer's salary from $32,301.36 to $40,180.86. A yes vote will pass the motion and increase the salary, a no vote will defeat the amendment. Everybody got it? All those, oh. There has to be six other people if you would like a paper ballot. Are there six other people for a paper ballot? I, one, two, three, four. Keep your, oh, there you go. Okay, five, six. Okay, raise your hands. Let me just make sure, six. Bob, one, two, three, four, five, six. And who is the one that made it? Irv, seven. There you go. There are seven people for a paper ballot. So there's enough people for a paper ballot. So what we're going to do now is, where the paper, there's little slips of paper at the back? Front. Where? Okay. Don't bring them up here because then it'll be too, if you have a little piece of scrap paper, that's fine. If not, we'll pass it around. You write two things on the piece of paper. Yes, which will pass the amendment and increase the salary. You write no, and that will defeat the amendment. Okay? Come up through the center, into the ballot box, and exit through the sides. If you need the ballot box brought to you, please let us know. I now, the ballot box is now open. Justice of the PCs. We have the result of the vote. The amendment, the amendment was to increase the treasurer's salary from $32,301 to $40,180. There was 11 yeses, 69 no's, and one blank. So the motion, the amendment fails. So, we're back to the main motion. I'm not going to repeat the main motion again with those salaries. Is there any further discussion on the main motion? Yes, in the back, which is going to be up front. And if you could move, come on, yeah, you're good. I just, move close to the microphone. They're saying the people that are talking up front can't hear.
Okay. My name is Jean McIntyre.
That's good.
And I wanted to say something about the hourly labor rate for the town clerk assistant and casual labor. I know, I think Mr. Lake said that it's a 2% raise. Is that what you just said? This year, 2%. And I feel that, I know, I get Social Security. I know that this year, they gave us a cost of living increase of 8%. And I also know that my grandmother, I mean, my granddaughter, sorry. My granddaughter just got a job at Walmart with a starting pay, 17 years old, of $18 an hour. And I feel when I see $1,590 for our, the people that work so hard for our town, I feel that they should be getting more of an increase because of the cost of living. And I don't know, am I allowed to propose that they get an 8% just like Social Security gave? Is that?
If you can make that motion, yes.
Can I make that motion? All right, I make the motion that the town clerk assistants and casual labor get an increase in their pay from last year of 8% for cost of living.
Is there a second? State your name. Who, what? Okay, just as long as the clerk's got it. This is, I'm trying to figure this out. 15, so you want to increase 1,590? No, no. No, no, it'd be 1,559, which was last year's, by 8%, which is $1.24 more, which would be 15.59. I shouldn't be doing this. 1684. Okay? I believe it would be 1684 rather than 1,590. What? Oh, you're doing, somebody else did the math?
I gave it, but that would be $1.25 rounded up.
Okay, well then, that's what, sorry, guys. I'm here to convey information to sit here and do this. 1684? It would be 1684. Okay, so there's amendment that's been moved and seconded to increase the casual labor and town clerk assistant from 1,590 to 1,684. You can amend the amendment. Okay, go ahead. If there's no objection, would you like to make that the main amendment?
I second it.
Okay, there's a second, but would you, is that, is everybody okay with that if there's no objection? Instead of doing this amendment to the amendment in multiple votes? I'm just making sure. I'm cheating. Okay. Okay, so we have amendment on the floor to make this $17 an hour for casual labor and town clerk assistant. Discussion on that, please. Yes, sir?
When you talk about moving this fee up to $17 an hour, or whatever that percentage might be, 8%, 9%, you're also talking about moving up every employee in town by the same rate. Okay? So on top of the part-time casual labor people, anybody that does full-time, you're bumping up 9%. Now, that's going to be quite a bill at the end of the year. You can't do one without doing for everybody. That is the one thing that is, that has been clear for at least the last three years that I've been doing this, is it's to be even across the board. So it's either everybody gets the same or everybody gets nothing. Now, adding to that, when you talk about our insurances going up, all the expenses that revolve around an employee, you're talking about a good, a good percentage of money that you're going to add to the tax base from just 8% or 9%.
Further discussion? Yes, Elaine? Please. Sorry.
I'm Eileen Fahy. I want to know why every employee has to have an 8% cost. We're talking about a minimum of hours that these people work, and the help that they give to the town clerk is really important. But I don't think that it's necessary, or maybe even legal, to have the whole town increased to 8% or 9%.
Everybody heard? Go ahead.
I would have a question to the people that work for the state. What did they get?
I would have a question to the people that work for the state. I know there's a few out here in the crowd of what did the state give for an increase this year? And the other comment would be is, is that we've gone through this before where we've given one person or one area, the town, a raise to a certain set amount and not to everybody else, and it created pandemonium in there. Because people started complaining about, well, why did this person get this much? And why did I not get this much? And that's why we go with a level across the board.
Okay, more discussion? Yes?
Phoebe Connolly. So if we are, if it is going to have to be across the board...
So if we are, if it is going to have to be across the board, the reality is the cost of living has increased. So I'm wondering if, I know we're not expecting anybody to do the math, but if we actually looked at the math of what an increase would be for all of the positions that are listed here and what the significance would be of that. Because there is no question that it is more expensive to live and be a consumer. So, given the value of these positions, what would that increase actually look like financially? And what impact would it have on the town? Given that it sounds like a lot of the money is coming back already. So I'm just wondering if the debate is necessary, given the amount, like, the way that the money cycles through? So I'm just curious about that, but not expecting anybody's math skills to be on the spot.
I guess, Phoebe, the question I would have is, when you say comes back around already, what are you referring to?
I'm not exactly certain, but what was discussed about the money coming back into the town office through fees, et cetera, is that they're basically pretty close to covering their own salaries. That's my understanding of what was being said.
Actually, that's not the case. I'll let you finish your point. Go ahead.
Whatever, I don't know the exact details, but just the money coming into the town clerk office from the work that these individuals are doing, or whatever it might be. I don't know the ins and outs, but it sounds like there was some discussion that the amount of money coming in through whatever modality is covering quite a bit of their positions.
No. That's not the case.
Okay.
What wasn't taken into account by that, that previous statement was that a lot of what the clerk's position does is they take in hunting licenses. They take in, they take in hunting licenses. They take in registrations. They take in property searches. Those property searches are like four dollars, something along that line. So you're come, you're not even close to covering the salary based on the income that comes into the town clerk's office. There are a lot of positions that she fills that are not something that we can get reimbursed for any more than we do. So. Just one minute, Eileen. Let me, let me address the last question. Fairness. Fairness amongst the employees. I think Rob said it right, exactly right, is once you start giving everybody their own subscription program, then you've got to make sure that you crack it. That takes the treasurer, extra time for the treasurer. It takes extra calculations for their retirement system, which also causes more funds to be expended, and their insurance. It's not just raising it up. And there is nothing illegal about how we decide to delegate our funds. This body is given the information, and if you decide that you want to go eight, nine, ten, twelve percent, you certainly can vote that in. But remember this, when you do that, it comes off the other end, and how much taxes are going to go up. Okay?
Elaine, first.
I just wanted to, I'm Eileen Fahy. I just wanted to mention that the actual income for the town clerk was seventy-three thousand dollars in 2022. The proposed is forty-six thousand for '23, and it's almost exactly the same for proposed for '24. So the forty thousand Alinka makes plus her casual laborers probably doesn't come to forty-six thousand. But I just wanted to clarify the fact that the man that came and said that the town clerk's office pays for itself, it actually does. Because I'm sure those fees are listed as revenue, so they don't leave the town. Thank you.
Charlie? Loud, you don't have a microphone.
Charles Martin. I think the issue here needs to be to the point. We're talking about casual labor. We're not talking about all the other town employees. I hire casual labor, and it's, I think we have to accept the fact that it's casual. It can't be compared to a full-time job at another institution, whatever that might be. Wages are competitive, but these are casual jobs that where I may hire someone to only work ten hours in the entire summer. It can't be compared to a full-time job with any kind of benefits or any of that sort of thing. It's just to pay people to do small jobs that we have. And not, not that some of the town clerk positions aren't small jobs, but it covers a lot of positions in town that are always called casual. So don't try to fill in benefits or cost of living raises that go to all employees and all of that sort of thing.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Yes?
I'm Lynda Sperry, and I'm confused. So, following up with what Charlie said, what is the amendment? What are we dealing with here? I thought we were dealing with just the town clerk assistants and the casual labor, not anybody else. So I don't really understand why we're discussing the town clerk salary. We're just, I thought we were just discussing the assistants and the casual labor. And I wouldn't mind hearing just off the top of a select person's head who, and I know who the assistant, not who they are, but what, who, how many, are there two assistants? Are there twenty assistants? In casual labor, does that include the plow drivers? I, you know, just a little clarification on who the, what these jobs, excuse me, what these people do. Just real quick. Thank you.
There are two in the town clerk's office that are considered casual labor. There are, there is one in the treasurer's office that's considered casual labor. There is, if I'm not mistaken, right, the attendant at the garage. Yeah, okay. The attendant at the transfer station is casual labor. Space. And the listers. All three of the listers. So everyone that is not, doesn't have a full-time position is listed as casual labor. Again, how do you differentiate when you go and tell that person who's running the plow or keeping the walks clear as part of the highway department? Or any other position in that, in town for that matter? If you say, well, there's no base, you know, there's no base to run off of. Okay? This is the way that we've done this for years, is the, the base rate is, the percentage is added to the base rate, which, and what I'm saying the base rate is, is casual labor. And then everything increases by that number. So if we say two percent, two percent across the board. Last year, we said four percent. Four percent across the board. The year before that was only one and a half. But everybody got the same thing. So again, yes, I, I understand what you're talking about, about part-timers, small jobs. But everybody, if they're on their own program, compounds things exponentially. One person is the same as the next person. That's where it's come from.
Yes, in the back.
You got to have the microphone.
People that are, people that are watching or to watch recordings later, if you speak that way, we can understand whatever.
I was just wondering, I mean, isn't the select board assistant considered like a full-time job and, with benefits? So those benefits, in a sense, outweigh or add to the actual value of the wage that the person's getting. I'd love to see just you get a raise, but I, I understand the concept of across the board is going to be pretty pricey. And if all, if all the other employees are part-time, they're only costing us that wage and that's it. Whereas the select board assistant is getting, I'm assuming, insurance, retirement, whatever, which is worth a lot.
Okay. Any other discussion on the amendment? Okay, we have amendment? Yes. Let me see, where am I at? We have an amendment on the floor to increase the town clerk assistant and casual labor from fifteen ninety to seventeen dollars. Hearing no other discussion, a paper ballot has been requested. Do I have six other hands for a paper ballot? I think there's six there. We now have a paper ballot for this amendment. The amendment is to increase the town clerk and casual labor from fifteen ninety to seventeen dollars. Two things to write. A yes vote passes the amendment and makes fifteen ninety seventeen dollars. A no vote defeats the amendment, and we go back to fifteen ninety. The ballot box, any questions? Yes. Elaine? We're only in, the motion on the amendment, hold on, everybody, the ballot box is not opened. There are still questions on the floor. The amendment is to increase the town clerk assistant and casual labor from fifteen ninety to seventeen dollars. We are not voting on any other raises or any other issues. Casual labor and town clerk assistant from fifteen ninety to seventeen dollars. Does that clarify? Yes? Yes? Did somebody say no over here? No. Okay. Yes vote passes the amendment, a no vote defeats it. The ballot box is now open. Sorry, I'm tired, a little grumpy. Why do I keep using my pen? Yeah, I keep doing it.
Okay, so yes, seventy-three. No, thirty-four.
So it passed.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. We have the results of the vote on the amendment. The amendment was to increase the town clerk assistant and casual labor from fifteen ninety to seventeen dollars. Yes votes were seventy-three, no votes were thirty-four, blank was one. The amendment passes. We now have a main motion on the floor that states to see what the salaries the town will vote to pay its various officials for the ensuing year. Town clerk, forty thousand, one hundred and eighty-six, eight, one hundred and eighty and eighty-six cents. Town treasurer, thirty-two thousand, three hundred and one thirty-six. Select board one chair, twelve hundred. Four members, one thousand each, for a total of four thousand. And town clerk assistant and casual labor, seventeen dollars. The motion is open for discussion. Is there any other discussion? Yes, ma'am? That's the vote. That's coming next. Nice try, though. I applaud the effort. Yes. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing no other discussion, I'm going to refrain from reading the motion once again. Everybody understands, all the numbers in the book are what's listed except for the town clerk assistant and casual labor, which is seventeen dollars. A yes vote passes this motion, and a no vote defeats the motion. We ready for the vote? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. I believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it, and the motion passes. Okay, you can applaud yourselves, please. No, not me. You guys did it. Good job. My job is to facilitate your will, and I think you guys did a great job. Okay. If there's no objection right now, or we could object and have a two-thirds vote, our state representative, Emily Long, is here. She is not a Townsend resident, so we must suspend the rules to allow her to speak. Is there any objection to her speaking? Hearing no objection, I'm going to give the floor to Ms. Long right now. I think what we're going to do, though, is turn this microphone around and have it standing.
I am not short. All right. Righty-tighty. There we go. Hi, everyone. So nice to be back in person. I hope you all feel the same way. I'm here by myself today because one of our two, I think probably got announced today, one of our two senators came down with COVID. So COVID still exists. There's quite a bit of it in the State House right now, and we're doing our best to avoid it. But just wanted to first start out by saying how happy I am to be back in person still. We are ourselves, in the legislature, all back in person. We are still allowing and encouraging participation by folks who are unable to be in the legislature. That includes all of you. We have, COVID has given us one real advantage, and that is opening up the access to the work that we do in the legislature. So right now, you can watch live stream of any committee meetings. I hope you're taking advantage of that. You can watch it later because we put it all up on, on YouTube, so you can watch things that happened last year even now because we have it all archived. So, which has also created quite an issue for us because the state archives have to archive everything that we save. So we're trying to figure out how we can store and archive all of our technical storage for what we do, and it's a lot. There's a lot of terabytes, I'll just say. So we also have legislators are able to participate remotely. We always have been able to participate remotely in committees, but we now can do it by Zoom. So you get to watch people who are actually not in the room but are on Zoom. So that's also really nice. And I serve, I don't, I'm not sitting on a policy committee this year. I am the majority leader in the House, so I don't sit on a policy committee now. I am sitting on two rules committee, and our rules committees are taking up some remote participation and voting in our committees only. You will not see that happening on the floor. We've had a lot of conversations, that there is, so much has changed with COVID, and the access that people have has become very important. And it's also allowed members to participate when their children are sick or their car broke down or things like that. So we are now starting to allow a limited number of days of actual remote participation and voting in committees. So this year, it is a pilot program, and we're allowing three days for people to, to actually participate and vote. Committees don't vote every day. It's only if you have a bill that you're passing out of committee, and so it probably will not be used a huge amount. When a committee votes on a bill, they're voting to When a committee votes on a bill, they're voting to recommend legislation to the full body. And we felt that it is okay to include remote voting for recommendations. We don't agree that it is also okay to remote vote on actually passing legislation unless we're all forced to do it again like we have in the past. So it won't happen on the floor. We see a huge value in being back in person. You're all here today, hoping you're seeing of the huge value of being back in person too. There's a lot of work that goes on outside of a committee room and outside of the floor as well, so we are more efficient, frankly, in person. And so I'm glad that we're back. Speaking of policies, in the state, in the legislature, we are addressing the same things that you're all feeling in your own homes and your own towns. The interlinked challenges between housing, childcare, and workforce issues are all forefront for us in the State House. We talk about them all the time, we're working on that constantly. We invested over three, I think it was something around three hundred and fifty-five million last year in housing and we're continuing to see other ways to open up housing for our communities, trying to make sure that if you're looking for a person to work for your business, they can move here and have a place to live. And right now, we're seeing an issue around that all over the state. And so this is a critical issue, they're all linked, these topics. The childcare, our goal is to make sure that no family is paying more than ten percent of their household income on childcare. That's a big goal and it's going to be a big expense. And so what we can do to mitigate that expense, it's uncertain yet, the Senate's still working on, they started the childcare bill, they're still working on that, but we'll have a shot at it in the House when it comes over and we'll see what we can do, how much we can afford to pass this year. We also have passed, or will be passing out of Ways and Means, a paid family and medical leave insurance program. We have done this in the past, I stood up in front of you and talked about this legislation in the past. It is similar legislation to what we had. We passed it both in the House and the Senate and had a veto by the governor, which was, which missed and override by one vote. We hear more and more all the time, not just from families, but also from businesses wanting us to offer this as a statewide program because businesses are doing it on their own, a lot and a lot more. And that's how they can help attract and retain employees. And so they could really use the help. So a larger pool reduces the cost for businesses as well. So we're working on that and we'll see where we come. That Bills and Ways and Means is coming, that is one that started in the House. Climate mitigation, you've all heard, I am certain, of S five, which is a bill that has just got voted on in the Senate. And we have not yet seen it in the House, but we're hearing about it in the House, as you can imagine. And when we go back, we'll be starting to take up that bill that is intended to follow up on the Global Warming Solutions Act and the goals within that legislation that passed a few years ago. And that one, it's super important that we try to mitigate the impacts of climate change and yet not make Vermont unaffordable for our most vulnerable. And so that's the goal, we'll see. I wish you'd had a senator come here to be able to speak about that today, but we're going to dig into it deeply when we go back to Montpelier next week, so. That's just some of the highlights. I don't know if anybody has any questions or if questions are even allowed, but.
Yes, questions are allowed.
Happy to have questions.
A Townsend resident?
Yes.
Okay.
I do have a town.
They're not, they're not on the voter checklist, so, so, right. I know, but to speak, I don't know how that works. If they're not on the voter checklist, does anybody have any objection?
No.
No? Okay, as long as there's two-thirds, we can let her speak.
I represent, still, if you're a resident.
Yes. Wait.
My name is Jean Goldrick, I'm new in town, relatively speaking. To most of the people that I see here, this is a lovely book that we get, this is the first town meeting I've attended. I'm grateful that the state representative is here, but I wonder, from other places I've lived, if the state could put in a one-page precis, it doesn't have to be a lot, about the things that you just talked about, so we have it in memory of what you've done or not done or are working on, whatever. Could you facilitate getting a report into our town book for the next meeting?
So the town report, just so you know and for everybody else, I grew up here, I grew up in Newfane. We've had town reports go through a lot of metamorphosis over the years. They cost a lot to produce and so each town makes a decision on their own about what they want to include in there. I have been so super busy in my job, I have not completed, I'm ashamed to say, my, my own town meeting report, which I will finish and put on a website that I have, so it is available. I typically bring a handful of, of reports printed out, I just haven't had time to get to it this year. But I'll do a mid-session report is what I'll do instead of a town meeting report. And we have a very extensive website. You can go in and see pretty much anything you want to see. And we are also, as legislators, very accessible, so write to us, call us, stop us in the grocery store, anything you want, and we are here for you, so happy to help out in whatever way.
I'm just looking for some historical written stuff, that's all. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You also give hours at the local library.
Sorry, yeah.
I don't need it anymore. Say it again. Okay, Emily, you also give hours at the Newfane Public Library, which is really wonderful to be able to access you there.
Thank you for bringing that up, I should have done that myself. I do offer hours, but I, Marlborough, Newfane, and Townsend are the three towns that I represent. I am once a month in Marlborough. In the wintertime, Marlborough turns that over to Zoom because they don't want to have to travel to their community center, which is where it is held, so anybody can join that one, I believe. Newfane, it always welcomes, the Morfree Library hosts me on West Street, they host me once a month. That one is on the third, the third Saturday of the month. These are year-round, not just during session, I do them year-round. Occasionally, there's a conflict and I can't make it, so just check, but it's posted on Front Porch Forum. And in Marlborough, it's on the second Saturday, they're in morning, in the morning, ten and ten-thirty. In the wintertime in Zoom, it's at nine in Marlborough. But please join us there. The Morfree Library has been wonderful about encouraging folks from any town. I actually get people from Brookline because Brookline and Newfane still have that link, even though I don't represent Brookline. I'm always happy to talk to any residents of any town around, to, to hear your feedback and to answer questions. So thank you for bringing that up. I do try to do that. And I am actually happy to come to Townsend at any point if somebody wants to set up something and happy to be here every other month or do whatever. Up to you, folks. Thank you.
Question? Wait. You're going to be, you're going to be.
I know, I think I can get my voice.
No, yeah, yell.
I know, it seems you're extremely busy out there, Emily, but I wonder if you were aware that there's a bill in front of the government and military's affairs committee to see if Vermont will join the Convention of States? And if you're aware of it, what do you respond, do you react to it at all?
Yeah, I, I don't, there is always a bill and I think every year and whatever committee it goes to and that one is exactly where it went this year, I think. There is interest. Convention of States comes with a lot of challenge and burden as well. Things can be, if you did join and we did hold a Convention of States, there's no way to limit what is discussed. And in Vermont, I, I hear almost, I hear very little feedback from my constituents about wanting to be one of the states that join it. I know there's a lot who have. I, I don't know whether, I, I can check and see whether the committee is going to take it up, I haven't heard.
But be curious, I think it makes a lot of sense to spend the base on the idea that a lot of things broken in Washington DC and how do you address them? Term limits and a balanced budget would go a long way, in most people's opinion, to getting things more under control, so. And, and, yeah, you never know where these things would take you, but democracy has worked pretty well and opened the floor up. We've come out with good things in the past, so I don't know. I hope you'd be paying close attention to it and appreciate it. I brought some propaganda about it, I'll leave it on the lunch table there, just for anybody who wants to see more about it.
Thank you.
Is that a constitutional convention you're talking?
Yes, that's what that is.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Right, in the back. Hi, everyone, Paul Pades. And Emily, hi, we spoke at the library, I wanted your visits there. And I just wondered if you could give the assembly an update of mode, of issues or update on progress on cleaner transportation, particularly electric buses. We know the state is challenged in some ways because they're rural communities and they're urban communities, but there's a lot of money available from the federal government. What's coming down the road, so to speak?
Yeah, thank you, Paul. We do talk about this pretty regularly and I would love to see us be able to increase the number of especially buses and larger vehicles, get them to electric vehicles. We haven't been able to secure that, that's a federal program. They're, they're very, pretty expensive to switch them over. As far as what we're doing here in Vermont, the T bill has not come out yet, that, that's the transportation bill, we call it the T bill. But there is quite a bit of federal money continuing to flow into Vermont from the Affordable Care Act and all the other bills that came since then. The Infrastructure Act has allowed us to expand some of the incentives to be able to purchase electric vehicles, e-bikes. One of the biggest challenges, there is pretty much no question that manufacturers are, some of them have already committed to moving strictly to electric vehicles, but auto manufacturers are shifting into that direction. As the vehicles improve in technology and they can go longer, they will work better for our rural state, but you need charging stations and you need a lot of them. And so a lot of the money that is being put into that is expanding our charging stations around the state and making that more accessible for people. There are many different vehicles out there today that are either being produced or are, are in the works. And I think that we should be doing all we can to encourage the use of electric vehicles to help lower our emissions. I talked to Green Mountain Power, they are trying to transition their fleet of trucks over to electric and they're on the process of doing that as well and I'm sure that'll try to continue across the state with other businesses as well, so. Thanks for your interest, Paul.
For about eight to 10 years now, the highway budget and stuff, the town doesn't get any more money than they did ten years ago. And are they ever going to increase that because of price of materials and, and maintenance of bridges and everything has gone up?
Yeah, we, I, I can't speak to the not, your town not getting more money because I don't know the actual dollars, I'd look to the select board for what over the historical amount is, but we do work off of the governor's budget and we are putting, we have been putting with this Infrastructure Act more money into our roads statewide. And I can't, I don't, I don't know how it's playing out here in the town of Townsend, but bridges and roads are on a schedule all the time for improvement and we need to be supporting our local communities. So feel free to give me feedback on what, what is a deficit here.
Well, prior to the money from the age of transportation comes down, runs between a hundred and ten and a hundred and thirteen thousand, it hasn't changed in eight, 10 years.
I had no idea that that was true, I'll look into it. Based on need is what I understand, so I'll look into it for you.
We do have bridges that are going to need repair and you apply for a grant or something, well, there's no money available.
So if bridges, I, I do know that there, their bridges are on schedules to, for repair and it's based on critical need, essentially. Whether a bridge gets, it never seems to happen as fast as we would like. And when a bridge starts to get worked on, it always takes longer than we expected and anticipated that it would take to get it repaired. The concrete bridge in Williamsville was a great example of that, how long it took. I mean, that was literally falling into the brook underneath it before, and it has been on the list for many, many years and it just barely was completed this fall, winter, actually. So all the bridges that are in need are reported by your community and they get on a list and get acted upon based on need.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Representative Long, we appreciate your time. Thank you for stopping by.
I'll let you.
Oh, yeah, I'll do that, I'll do that, we'll figure that out.
Thanks, everyone, feel free to get ahold of me.
Thank you for stopping by.
I didn't do AV in high school. I could have gone AV in high school.
Okay, now back to our regularly scheduled program. Okay, where are we? We're on elections, I believe. Yes, elections. Vermont state law requires paper ballots for elections. If there's more than one individual running for select board, listers and auditor, we don't have auditors anymore, select board and listers, all other elections may be handled from the floor. A voter may ask for a division of the House in the paper ballot, needs six other voters. Seconding a nomination is acceptable but not necessary, it's nice to have the endorsement, but we do not need a second for a nomination. And you can nominate yourself if you choose to. Again, there'll be no personal attacks and if there's no objection and you want to hear about somebody, we'll let them give a brief background and some information. No other questions or speaking to the nominees is allowed. A voter may move to close the nominations, but generally I let all the nominations come in before we close the nominations. And then if there are three or more candidates, after three votes, we knock one out, we'll talk about that. Okay, so article, I'm going to read them all. Article four, to elect all town officials for the ensuing year. Town clerk, one one-year term, town treasurer, one one-year term, select board, one three-year term, another select board, there's two one-year terms, listers gets one three-year term, the Lincoln tax collector, one one-year term, first constable, one one-year term, second constable, one one-year term, West River Modified Union Educational District, one three-year term, cemetery commissioner, one five-year term, and library trustee, one five-year term. So let's start with the town clerk. I will now entertain nominations for, well, let me start here. The town clerk is Elka Wilson and I will now entertain nominations for the town clerk for a one-year position. Nominations are now open. How's that?
Nominate Elanka Wilson.
Elanka Wilson, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Third. Any other nominations? Okay, got to say my little speech. Hearing, if there are no objections and hearing no more nominations, I declare the nominations closed and instruct the ca, the clerk to cast one, one ballot for Elanka Wilson, sorry. Sorry, I want to say Elkena, so bad. Ellenka Wilson for a one-year term as town clerk. All those, a yes vote passes, a no vote defeats. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Thank you. I will now entertain nominations for the town treasurer, one-year term. That's currently held by Elaine Hill. Yes?
I'm going to nominate Elaine Hill.
Elaine Hill's been nominated. Any other nominations? If there are no objections and hearing no more nominations, I declare the nominations closed and instruct the clerk to cast one ballot for Elaine Hill for town treasurer for one year. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Moving on to Select Board. There's three positions on the Select Board, one three-year term and two one-year terms. We'll start by, I'll accept nominations for the three-year term.
I nominate Steve Frisk.
I nominate Phoebe Conley.
Okay, hang on. And this has to be a paper ballot, by the way. Oh, Steve Frisk has declined. So, now, we have Catherine Morrow for the three-year term. Any other nominations for the three-year term? Seeing no other nominations, we can handle this from the floor. Okay. If there's no objections and hearing no more nominations, I declare the nominations closed and instruct the clerk to cast one ballot for Catherine Morrow for the three-year Select Board term. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. I guess I should have asked you if you wanted. But I didn't. Okay, now, we'll move on to one, one of the one-year Select Board terms. Let's start with Catherine Morrow's position that is now vacant. I will entertain nominations for that position.
I nominate Rob Swiger.
Rob Swiger, okay. That Rob's, Rob, hi, that's Rob up front, all the way on the left. Yes?
I nominate, oh, we need a second.
No, no seconds needed.
Phoebe Conley.
Phoebe Conley. You on board? She's on board. Okay, so, we got Phoebe and Rob for this one. Do you go by, do you like Rob or Robert?
Robert.
Robert, okay, Robert, absolutely. Okay, we have, this have to be a paper ballot? Okay, any other nominations? Do we, do we want to make this easier-ish?
Yeah.
There is a way we can make it easier.
We didn't bring lunch.
We didn't bring lunch? Okay, this is like way breaking the rules.
Can I withdraw my?
That, that, that's probably the best way to do it, opposed to me telling you no. Okay, with the understanding, okay, so, what's happening is, would there be any other nominations for Select Board? For any, for the one-year position, any one of them?
Steve Frisk.
Steve Frisk? Steve Frisk, one-year term.
I decline.
There you go, good question. Excellent, that was, that was totally valid. I get what you were trying to do. Any, any other people for, for Select Board? Okay, so, what's going to happen is, Phoebe's going to withdraw from this one, then we'll have one person for the one year there, then Phoebe will be nominated for the other one, and I just like broke election law big time, but that's okay. Okay, you did it, right, right, okay, okay. Okay, so, we now have one person nominated for the one-year position, and I hate to say it, but if somebody wants to run and decides to go at the next one, they will be running against you. Right, I'm not going to stop somebody from, okay. So, right now, we just have Robert Swiger for this one-year position. Any other nominations for this position? If there are no objections and hearing no other nominations, I declare the, I declare the nominations closed and instruct the clerk to cast one ballot for Rob Swiger for a one-year position on the Select Board. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I believe the ayes have it. The ayes have it. Thank you, Robert. Okay, next is another one-year term for Select Board.
You can nominate yourself.
I need to nominate.
There you go. Okay, Phoebe Conley has been nominated for the one-year position on the Select Board, and you can, I'm not going to stop anybody from wanting to run. So, is anybody else interested? Any, any other nominations? Okay, hearing no other nominations, and if there are no objections, I declare the nominations closed and instruct the clerk to cast one ballot for Phoebe Conley for a one-year term on the Select Board. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Thank you, Phoebe. Thank you, Robert, and thank you, Catherine. This is thankless job, for sure. That's why I do this and not that. Okay, so, there's the Select Board. Let's move on to Lister. Listers, Eugene Cook holds, Cook holds the position right now. It's a one, it's a three, one three-year term for Lister. I will now entertain nominations.
I nominate Eugene Henry Cook.
Eugene Henry, I didn't know that. Eugene Henry Cook has been nominated for the Lister position. Are there any other nominations for the one, three-year Lister position? Hearing no other nominations, and if there are no objections, I will instruct the clerk, I declare the nominations closed and will instruct the clerk to cast one ballot for Eugene Henry Cook for a three-year term as Lister. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? I believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Congratulations. The delinquent tax collector, it is a one-year term, and Becky Riley currently holds that position. I will now entertain nominations.
I nominate Becky Riley.
Becky Riley has been nominated. Becky, I see, I saw your back. There you are. You're good? Okay, any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, and if there are no objections, I declare the nominations closed and instruct the clerk to cast one ballot for Beckley Riley for a one-year term as delinquent tax collector. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes, I believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Okay, first constable. We have a one, one-year term currently held by Warren Beatty. I will now entertain nominations for first constable.
I nominate Warren Beatty.
Warren Beatty has been nominated. He's, okay. Any other nominations for first constable? Hearing no other nominations, and if there are no objections, I declare the nominations closed and instruct the clerk to cast one ballot for Warren Beatty for a one-year term as first constable. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Man, they're trying to get on your good side. Second constable, we have a one-year term currently held by Mike Cuts. I will now entertain nominations. Mike Cuts has been nominated. He's not here, I don't think. I haven't seen him, but you're allowed to nominate if they're not here. Any other nominations? Oh, in the back.
Michelle Brooks.
Michelle Brooks. Is Michelle Brooks here? Valeri? No? Okay. Wow, we have two people nominated that are not here. Any other nominations? Hearing no nominations. Okay, since this is not one of the required ballots, we can just do it by hands, unless somebody wants a paper ballot. So, first, I'll ask by hands for Mike Cuts. Okay, thank you. I'm not going to count. I think I see the result. All those in favor, hands for Michelle Brooks. There you go. Okay, I believe the first constable position is now held by Mike Cuts. Second, sorry, thank you for correcting me, yes. Second constable position was won by Mike Cuts. Thank you. On to the West River Modified Union Educational Director. We have one three-year term currently held by Al Clausen. I will now entertain nominations.
I nominate Al Clausen.
Al Clausen has been nominated. Any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, and if there are no objections, I declare the nominations closed and will instruct the clerk to cast one ballot for Al Clausen for a three-year term on the West River Modified Union Educational Director. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Okay, Cemetery Commissioner. We have one five-year term currently held by Carly Sanderson. I will now entertain nominations.
I nominate Carly Sanderson.
Carly Sanderson has been nominated again. I don't believe she's here. I didn't see her. But that's okay. Any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, and if there's no objections, I will instruct the clerk, I declare the nominations closed and instruct the clerk to cast one ballot for Carly Sanderson for a five-year term on the Cemetery Commission. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. And Library Trustee, one five-year term currently held by Patricia Lasoff. I'll now entertain nominations.
I nominate Elizabeth Brown.
Elizabeth Brown? Okay. Elizabeth Brown. Oh, that was Merrily. Yeah. Wait, say the name again. Elizabeth Brown. Okay. Okay, is Elizabeth here?
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, there she is. Anybody want to know Elizabeth Brown? There she is, right there. Would you like to say something? Hi?
Hi, I'm actually working with the library in the TCU since, I believe, September when Pat stepped down, and I'm really enjoying it, and I would love to keep working with the library in the TCU. Yeah, do it.
Excellent. Any other nominations for Library Trustee? Hearing no other nominations, and if there are no objections, I declare the nominations closed and will instruct the clerk to cast one ballot for Elizabeth Brown for a five-year term as a Library Trustee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Congratulations. Thank you for your service to everybody. Okay. Okay, moving on. Article five, to see if the town will authorize the Select Board to set a tax rate sufficient to cover all monies raised for municipal entities for the period of July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024, and to borrow money in anticipation of taxes. There you go, thank you. Okay, got that? Good? Okay, it's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on said motion? Pretty boilerplate. Okay, hearing no discussion, there's a motion before you to see if the town will authorize the Select Board to set tax rates sufficient to cover all monies raised for municipal entities for the period of July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024, and to borrow money in anticipation of taxes. A yes vote passes the motion and no vote defeats the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Okay, Article six, to see if the town will authorize its property tax collector to receive its real property taxes quarterly, August 25th, 2023, November 22nd, 2023, February 23rd, 2024, and May 24th, 2024. Monthly interest can be charged at a rate of one-half percent or fraction thereof. Interest of 1% or fraction thereof plus penalties will commence on May 30th, 2023. Oh, thank you. Who's that, Eugene? Who's that? Oh, Will, Will in the back, sorry. Second. Did I do something wrong?
Should it say 2024?
At the end?
At the end?
Yes, it should, and somebody should make an amendment for that.
Make an amendment to change it to May 30th, 2024.
Okay, okay, now, we have to vote on that first, but thank you for catching that. Okay, so, the amendment on the floor reflects this. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I should have asked for discussion, but I don't think there would have been any discussion. Okay, so, now, there's a motion before you that has that four at the end. Thank you for correcting that. Any other discussion? Hearing no discussion, I would read it to you again, but if you, if there's no objection, I'll refrain. It's exactly what it says, but the last letter, number being a four instead of a three. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Thank you. Okay, Article seven, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $581,199 to pay for the running expenses and liabilities of the town, of which $392,482 to be raised in taxes. This is on pages nine through 13 in your report, just in case you wanted to know. I will now entertain a motion. Hang on. Yes, Elaine? So, moved? Okay, second?
Second.
Second, okay. Discussion? Do you want to do something?
No.
No, okay.
I have the calculations.
Okay, okay, yes, sir.
Do we need to amend this because of the change in casual labor?
We were, we were, we were talking about this earlier. Go ahead, say, oh, what did I do with the thing?
We have to do the calculations and see how they fit, so, in all likelihood, what will happen, there'll be a cut to cover the, the change in the casual labor.
Where?
Wherever we can find it. You add something, you got to take something away.
Any other discussion? Uh, wait, yeah, I didn't see the hand.
Right here.
Oh, Irv, I'm sorry. All right, yeah, give me that.
Yeah, I want to know if the Select Board, what the status is on the compactor.
Status on the compactor.
The fuel pump was identified as the problem. The part has been ordered. We're waiting for Colin to install it.
Any other discussion on the town budget, the running expenses and liabilities? Yes, sir.
I think a motion to amend, a motion on the floor to increase the amount to be appropriated by $10,000 and the amount to be raised by taxes to be increased by $10,000 to cover the changes that are proposed for the casual labor increase.
Okay, so, amendment? Where are you going?
I actually wanted to bring up something.
Okay, hang on, hang on. There's an amendment on the floor, there's an amendment being proposed to increase the appropriation and the raised in taxes by $10,000, which you can do, okay? That you're allowed to change these numbers within reason, that if a person that was not here would not be surprised by the change. So, you couldn't change it to a million dollars all of a sudden, that would be ruled out of order. But a $10,000 change is, I think, is an acceptable amount. It's really up to you guys to make that decision. This amendment has not been seconded yet.
Alex Moore.
Okay, who is, who's that?
Alex Moore.
Alex Moore, okay, thank you, sir. So, now, it's been moved and seconded, we will discuss the amendment now, okay? Nothing about the line item in the book or anything about those things right now about the compactor. We can do that again after we vote on this amendment, but let's talk about the amendment first. Is there any discussion about increasing this 10,000, increasing the expenses and liabilities for $10,000? Any discussion about that? Yes, Elaine, want to come up to the, yeah, come up to my, thank you.
It's Aileen.
Aileen, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Elaine Hill, Aileen, you're right.
Yeah.
Sorry, you're right.
See, went right out of my head, I'm having a senior moment. I want to talk about making the amendment up to $10,000. So, if it's $7,000, we don't have $3,000 extra voted into our budget.
I, yeah, I don't, I don't know. I mean, we're voting on a set amount of money for the expenses and liabilities of the town, so I don't know if you can leave it hanging like that. That's a kind of a law question that I'm not able to answer. I don't know if I would do that. I would just pick an amount, and then, if there's $3,000 left over, I assume they would roll it over to the next year. roll it over to the next year, and we would get a better feel of, I mean, we'd know next year what it would cost.
Well, I'm not sure about that, but generally, in the different organizations that I'm in, when we want to purchase something, we put a ceiling on that purchased dollar amount that they can spend up to.
Okay. I'm, I'm here to facilitate what you'd like. There's now amendment to the amendment that says up to $10,000. Second?
Second.
Okay. Seconded. Now we can discuss up to. Any discussion about up to? It's okay. Yes?
Chris Groetz Cook, and I've had my share of fun with the budget, and it moves from one minute to the next, and we just, in Article Three, we changed the whole thing. I think that the people who worked on this budget very hard did a good job, know how to do it, but you can't possibly do the calculations sitting here with the rest of us talking. I would ask you folks, which would make it easier for you to give you a number and say, just do it and put the next in 2025, '26, something like that? Or would it be easier for you to do the calculation for the increase and change it? And we give you permission to make that change? Which would make the most sense to you?
Locked-in fixed figure would probably be the easiest way to deal with it. I don't honestly think we need the $10,000 appropriated, because there are caveats in the budget that there are funds that we can, we can use in lieu of. So somebody, like I said before, you put something in, something's got to come out. There's no reason why we can't find what we need to absorb this cost. I don't, I don't advocate you do that on every line item, because we're going to run out of money real fast. But, yeah, to allocate another $10,000, in my opinion, is just, is wasting those funds. Anybody else? Anybody else have?
I agree with Sherwood in the respect that we did work pretty hard on getting the budget to where it is. If we needed to allocate another $10,000, it would mean that we're taking it away from another budget, which we've been working pretty diligently on. I think at this point, you know, it would make sense just to give us a number that would raise everybody's taxes, and that's kind of where we sit.
Okay, we're dealing with an amendment to the amendment on the up to $10,000. Yes?
If you look at page 13, we've never used the full amount.
If you look at page 13, we've never used the full amount, is what she said.
So there would be $10,000 in there.
So there would be $10,000 in there anyway. Yes, sir?
I took a call going over, I don't believe you used the term up to in the dollar amounts voting on the budget.
He's saying that, he's making a point of order that you can't use the word up to in the, in the.
It has to be a $10,000.
An amount. I've seen, I've seen it that way before, but I, I don't like it, but again, it's up, I'll leave it up to you, and then if you did something wrong, the lawyers will clear it up. Don't worry. So, yes, sir?
For me, I'm going to ask the person that made the motion, after hearing the Select Board, would you like to withdraw the motion?
Well, we're, we're, we're not dealing with the motion, thank you very much. We will eventually, though.
We're dealing with the up to.
We're, we're dealing with the up to. But yes, no, I understand what you're saying. Do you want to withdraw the up to?
No.
No, okay, okay, that's, I didn't, that, that's okay. Okay. So is there any other, is there any other discussion about the wording up to $10,000? Any other discussion? Hearing no discussion, we will now take a vote on changing the amendment to up to $10,000. Once we vote on this, we then go back to the $10,000 and continue to discuss that. So we're not getting rid of the $10,000. We're deciding whether or not we're going up to $10,000, or $10,000 is the amount. Do we understand? A yes vote includes up to $10,000. A no vote defeats that. We're not done with the $10,000 yet, you understand? Okay, good. Okay. So a yes vote, up to $10,000, and then that becomes the main amendment, and then we vote on that again. So all those in favor of up to $10,000, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
I believe the noes have it? The noes do have it. We now have an amendment on the floor to increase the main motion $10,000. Is there any further discussion on that? Hearing no other discussion on that, a yes vote increases the budget by $10,000, a no vote defeats that. All those in favor of increase, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
Okay. I believe, that, do you want to divide the house? All those in favor, please raise your hand, just so I could see. Thank you. All those against, please raise your hand, so I could, thank you. Okay. So I believe the noes have it? The noes do have it. We are now back to the original main motion to see if the town will vote to appropriate $581,199 to pay for the running expenses and liabilities of the town, of which $392,482 will be raised in taxes. Further discussion on this motion now? The question is, go ahead, wait, wait for the applause, because then everybody can hear it. Is there enough money in there to fix the town hall so we can get back in the town hall, is the question? Right? Okay. Yeah, good question.
No. The answer is no. That is going to take an.
Closer.
We can't use the town hall for a publicly-worn meeting that's under, under the rules we're operating right now, because we can't get everybody up the stairs. The stair chair is not legal. We can't replace it. It wouldn't be legal, and the only way that we're going to be able to use that upstairs for publicly-worn meetings is going to be through an elevator system. So that and the cost of materials, no, it's not going to have, it's not even going to make a dent in it.
Oh, anywhere, depends on who you talk to, anywhere from five to 10 million dollars.
Because when that was done, the ADA, that was legal. We poured the concrete outside, we poured the whole roof porch, the chair upstairs was legal, and the whole yard. Now how come it isn't?
Very good question.
The reason that it's not legal is because we have to change it. If we could do the stair chair exactly the way it is, it would not affect the ADA. But because we have to change the chair, it has to be compliant. Now, out front, you run the same, you run the same issue. If it was compliant at the time that that was, that was set up, then it's grandfathered. But once you start changing, then it's no longer grandfathered, and the whole thing has to be done. So that, that's, that's the short answer. There's a lot of complicated other.
The chair has to work.
It still physically moves. I wouldn't want to stick anybody in it. I really wouldn't. Plus, the other thing that makes ADA a challenge is that the person who is using the thing has to be able to take their mode of transportation with them. They can't do that with a stair chair. That's just one of the, one of the problems. Did I answer that? Thank you.
So the ADA legislation, too far away?
You have to get closer, so we can hear you. There you go. That's it. Just get a little closer.
I wasn't on. So ADA legislation was actually signed into law in 1989 by Papa Bush, so it's been around for a long time. The Planning Commission has dealt with ADA compliance in Town Hall since roughly 80, excuse me, 2006, then again in 2007, 2008. It's been an ongoing process, and when you talk about ADA, the ramp is important certainly, but once you get onto the porch, then you have to get into the building. The current ramp to the front doors is not compliant, and once you get in the building, you don't have any accessible bathrooms. It's a whole process, and we had an architect most recently evaluate Town Hall, and the budget came to about a million three. That included, in addition, off of the back, that was going to be two stories and additional ADA bathrooms. The current access in and out is not compliant with current life safety rules. There's a number of issues. It's not real simple. There's a whole host of things. Once you do one thing, you need to continue to expand it to comply with current regulations and standards.
Thank you for the explanation. This isn't for me. This is for everybody to hear, and remember, it's the TV that's the biggest issue.
I'm just kind of curious as to how the library has an elevator, and the local church has a chair lift that they use for, that I'm assuming meet these standards. They're public buildings, but yet we can't do that in the Town Hall. It's, it just kind of like, seems like we should be able to factor it in. And I've also heard rumors that maybe there's going to be an entirely new building, and that's why we're not doing any repairs, so that we can have a fire station combination public building for people to use for these meetings, and so it just lets the Town Hall fall into rack and ruin? I don't know. This is a rumor, but I'm just kind of questioning what, what is the solution, other than saying we don't have the money? Because you can say that year in and year out, and eventually, it is going to fall apart. So can't just be denied.
Barbara Guerrero. So Sherwood, you said to fix it, five to 10 million dollars. Bob, you just said a million three. So which is it? I mean, that, I'm going with the million three. No disrespect, but it seems like you've done the research, so.
That was an architect's projection, and it's a little bit old, meaning it's two or three years old at this point.
Okay, so for the record, it was an architecture's projection two or three years ago. Okay, great. But I'm happy to know the work is, the research is ongoing with the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Any other discussion on Article, I don't know what? Oh, here you go.
Barbara, just to clarify from what I said, it, that price tag was given, as Bob said, two or three years ago. That was before everything quadrupled in prices. That was before a two-by-four didn't cost you 12 bucks, okay? And the answer to the other question was, why does the library have one in the church? Can't speak to how the church has it. That's not our problem. The library is, that's a relatively new building, and was built when it was put in there, as far as I know. But we're talking about the Town Hall and not other buildings in town. And retrofitting, as opposed to building new, is always going to cost more.
When we talk about putting in a million point three at the low end to fix the Town Hall, I've lived here for 20 years. I don't plan on dying tomorrow or moving out of town tomorrow, and if I was going to spend 1.3 million as a town, I think I'd rather put it into a fire department.
Lyndis Berry. Did I hear somebody say that we have to have certain ADA regulations covered for a warned meeting? And not like having the, like the dance we had after the dinners three years ago, or, you know, any other, is there, can we still use the upstairs at the Town Hall for other things that aren't warned town meetings?
The short answer is yes. The only thing that we can't do, the reason that we're over here, is we can't provide access to every voter who wants to come. Okay? The Select Board has taken the position that if you, as a town resident, want to lease that space, you can, with the understanding that there might be fire regulations that you might have to have a fire safety officer at, there might be other situations that come up that you may have to deal with in order to get people there. We've not closed the building and don't intend to, but we have to, if it's a legally-worn meeting, provide free access to everyone. So if we could, if we could have done it in the downstairs for a town meeting, we would still have been over there, but we can't. It's not enough space, even for the amount of people that are here, so.
Even though, but the, but you had said the restrooms over there are not compliant for wheelchairs?
As a private citizen, wanting to use the space.
Yeah, yeah.
You can use the space. You'd have to fill out the request to do it, but yes.
It wouldn't be for, but not for a warned.
Right. You can't, where you have to have open meeting law regulations.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Any other discussion? Okay. Hearing no other discussion. We have a motion before us to see if the town, to see if we will vote to appropriate $581,199 to pay the running expenses and liabilities of the town, of which $392,482 to be raised in taxes. Are we ready for the vote? No other discussion? All those, a yes vote passes the motion, a no vote defeats the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Believe the ayes have it? The ayes do have it. Okay. Moving on to Article eight. To see if the town will vote to appropriate $723,214 to pay for the running expenses and liabilities of maintaining the town's roads, of which $610,214 is to be raised in taxes. That's on pages 14 to 16. I will entertain a motion. Okay. You got it? Okay. Yes, Irv?
How come they're, how come they're hiring people to file roads when for years, right up until this new crew took over, they always done it with three men?
Truck five is in an auto body shop. Truck, truck three is down for electrical problems. Truck one is down with a broken leaf spring. We didn't have the vehicles. We knew we had a big storm coming. I wanted four trucks on the road. I called Sherwood. We put a plan in place two years ago. If COVID struck and town employees, highway employees were sick during a storm, we If COVID struck and town employees, highway employees were sick during a storm, we identified local contractors that we would hire to cover our roads. They cannot drive our trucks because of our insurance, so they have to drive their own personal trucks. And I gave them a route, and that's what they did, and that's why it was done.
Any other discussion? Seeing no other discussion, there's a motion before us to see if the town will vote to appropriate $723,214 to pay for the running expenses and liabilities of maintaining the town's roads, of which $610,214 is to be raised in taxes. A yes vote passes the motion, a no vote defeats the motion. We ready for the question? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I believe the ayes have it? The ayes do have it. Moving on. Article nine. To see if the town will vote to raise $59,608.93 by taxation for the running expenses and liabilities of the library. The library fund is on page 18, the librarian's report is on page 32, and the library annual report is on page 33. I will now entertain a motion. So moved. Second. I didn't see. Got it? Okay, good. Is there any discussion? Let's, let's take the vote first. Let, let's do that first. And then I'll suspend the rules. I think that's better. Okay. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, there's a motion before us to see if the town will vote to raise $59,608.93 by taxation for the running expenses and liabilities of the library. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I believe the ayes have it? The ayes do have it. I would like to suspend the rules of the meeting for a moment and do some kind of non-binding informational visit. If there is an objection, we could take a two-thirds vote. But the library trustees would like to make a little presentation about the community and some of the things they're working on right now, and they wanted to do it around when the library vote was taken. Is there any objection to having them come up and speak right now, give a little presentation about what they're working on? Hearing no objection, come on up front. Russ. How you doing? Yep. Oh, want me to turn it around? That makes sense.
Thank you very much. I'm Mary Lee Atley. This is Jean McIntyre and Elizabeth Brown, our brand new trustee. The, we're the trustees at the library. This really is not so much, it's just a quick information about something that we're doing at the library. We wanted to let you all know about a project we've been working on for the last few months. We've been interviewing people and groups throughout our town to find out what their aspirations are for Townsend. What kind of community do you want to live in, and what challenges do we need to overcome and make those changes happen? We're discovering there are definitely themes. Things like a desire to communicate within the town, easy ways to know what activities are happening. It's really been kind of amazing, the number of suggestions about great ways to improve our town. We've interviewed 12 groups so far, 50 individuals, and we have a lot more groups on the agenda. We plan to have at least one more open community meeting. And after that, we're going to compile the results, find out what the themes are, see how the library can fit in, and then share that information with the rest of the community so that we can figure out ways to work together to make this the kind of place, you know, we're all hoping for. There's, we want to hear from everyone, and there's three, at least three different ways you can do it. In the back of the room, over on the table near the lunchroom, there is an aspiration survey, and you could fill that out right now and leave it in the box. On Monday at 5:30, we're having a community meeting. We'd love to have as many of you as possible come to the library, tell us what you're thinking, tell us what you'd like to see. And then there's also going to be a link from the library webpage to a Google document survey. You could fill it out there. Really hope we can get to hear from all of you. Thank you.
Hey, wait, wait, wait. Any questions for the library trustees? Yes, question?
Hi, I have one question for donating lots on Wednesday to the library. I know people who are interested in donating, hook up the mail-in check or come stop by the library. She's simply doing it. So if there's any way to find someone with the tech skills to kind of volunteer.
I was about to say, the younger, the younger generation would like a button on the internet so they could donate money, because writing a check is difficult. I get it. I'm still the check writer, but yes, that makes sense. Absolutely.
It really does. And we've been trying to figure out how to do it. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you.
Just thank you for what you're doing for the community. It's wonderful.
Because I, because I have the microphone, I can tell you what my opinion for the community is. How about a corner store? I'd like somewhere to go get coffee, have breakfast, and chit chat. But that's just me. Okay. Moving on. Okay, so we just passed Article nine, which is the library budget. We're on Article 10. To see if the town will raise $2,100 by taxation for the old cemetery fund. Irv and Charlie, thank you. It's been moved and seconded to raise $2,100 by taxation for the old cemetery fund. The cemetery fund finances are on page 19, and the commissioner annual report is on page 29. Is there any discussion about Article 10? Hearing no discussion, there's a motion before us to see if the town will raise $2,100 by taxation for the old cemetery fund. A yes vote passes the motion, a no vote defeats the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Believe the ayes have it? The ayes do have it. Moving on. Article 11. To see if the town will vote to raise $20,000 by taxation to be placed in the capital expenditure fund fire department reserve toward a future pumper. I will entertain a motion. Okay. It's been moved and seconded. That's, I think the reserve funds are on page 17. And it's, there's a line item in there for the fire department fund. And then the volunteer fire department annual report is on page 24, if you're interested. There's a motion before us to see if the town will raise $20,000 by taxation to be placed in the capital expenditure fund fire department reserve toward a future pumper. If there's no discussion? Yes, discussion, please. Thank you.
So please don't throw anything at me. I know the fire department is really popular in this town, and I agree that they're really important. But this is the double the amount of money that we voted for the fire department last year, and they just got $330,000 handed to them in ARPA funds for this truck. So frankly, you know, with that kind of a gift, I'm kind of wondering why we have to come double the amount we're donating to the fire department when they got this nice little check handed to them this year. And thanks for not throwing things at me.
Is there a response to that? Yep.
I'm definitely in favor of giving the fire department the funds they need to do the job that they do.
Okay. Over the last 23 years, the town has voted for $10,000 a year to put in that fund. The cost of building these things has outstripped the fundraising by double. Something that could have been bought 23 years ago with $200,000 would have been top of the line. Something that's bought this year for over $600,000 is, is the best that we can do in trimming out the, what we're asking for. And how it breaks down is there's roughly $290,000 in the reserve funds that have been set up every year for the last 23 years. We received ARPA funding under very close guidelines as to what we could originally do with it, and we were able to apply that, those ARPA funds to three projects, as you can see in the, in the Select Board's report. That still brings us short of the goal. The goal is about 600, I want to say $640,000 right now. It only gets us what we've got so far between the ARPA funds and what's in the reserve account, about $600,000. So the way to make that fund up, the Select Board discussed potential financing options, and we can finance it at 2%, 3%, 4%, whatever the going rate is, for upwards of $40,000. Or we can add, over the next two years, another $10,000 to what we've already had on the book. So meaning, we would normally have asked you for $10,000. We put another 10 into that, and it gets us to 20. And then we get to 640 by the following year of, of $20,000. This is not, it looks like a large increase, but it's not, because there are other things that we cut out to be able to handle this type of funding within the existing budget and budget awards, meaning the reserve awards. So the other point, and then I think I would yield to Glenn, the fire chief, is we are rated for our fire insurance based on what our capabilities are here. If we drop a low standard, that's going to hit us in the wallet. Insurance companies are, as you all know, if you all own houses, or you all, definitely if you own cars, insurance rates go crazy. Just depends on the air or the wind in the, in the trees. So these, these are things, this particular thing will be, by the time we're able to purchase it, this truck will put the main truck that we have to respond to emergencies at 25 years, 25 years instead of 20 years, which is what the standard is right now. And like I said, I think I'd yield to Glenn to be able to tell you what the process has been, and so you have some more information about why we need to move now. The only thing I'll add to that is our ARPA funds are held until 2026. We have to earmark them by 2024. They have been earmarked. If we don't use them, they go back to the federal government, and we go back to trying to save and go pull together what we can pull together of what equipment we might be able to find.
Is there, is there, yeah, Irv, sorry.
Sheriff, my concern is that also to replace the fire truck now, which is getting up close to being outdated, that you have to order something special with the, with the fire station we have.
Yes.
Is that not true?
And that's what I want Glenn to talk. Ken, you want to talk about that? They want you to talk about. It's about the, the firehouse doesn't fit fire trucks.
All right, just to, so I have it. The question for Irv is, did we have to order a special truck to fit the building? Is that correct? I was having a hard time hearing you.
Yes.
Okay. So that, that is correct. It is like most rural fire departments that are extremely old, the, they were built small. They were built to hold back ends vehicles. Vehicles have all gotten much larger, if you haven't noticed, and that's the problem we've run into. That's why, I think it's like five, five years ago, we started out with a building committee, which has been active. We did stop that during COVID because it was near impossible to have meetings during COVID. That being said, we, the truck committee that originally started out in 2018 actually transpired or transferred into a building committee because we realized it was going to cost us a lot of extra money to purchase a truck that'll fit that building. And the extra cost that we've looked into to change the building so we could buy, quote, "a run-of-the-mill" truck, it's like a wash. And in the end, we still have a building that has a lot of other issues. Replacing the building is, is, that will probably kick back up once the truck committee is done with its work, which were very close, I believe, to giving off to the Select Board to go out to bid. And if there was any more questions, I can address that. As far as, I'll back up, I think, to the original question, which had something to do with money. And several times, we've tried to tell the town at Town Meeting Day that $10,000 is not enough. That was enough 20 years ago. Prices of everything has gone up. Pickett, the price has gone up, if not doubled. And every time it was brought up, it was always brought up by, you know, the townspeople that you can borrow money for nothing. Because that's what we, that's was the general consensus of the town people. So at the end of the day, you can either put it away and try to keep people's tax funding level, especially those that are on a fixed income, or you can borrow money and, you know, hope that the interest rates don't go out of control and have no idea what you're spending. And that, that's kind of how this has all played out. As far as getting the check for the ARPA funds, there was only certain items that you could spend that money on, and the money has to be spent a certain amount of time. And it, it just worked out. Otherwise, yes, the, the Select Board on behalf of the fire department would be asking the townspeople to go out and get a loan like the highway department does for $400,000, $500,000 for a new truck. Those are the choices unfortunately we're left with. I feel as a, as a taxpayer and as a fire chief, that they've made the right decision.
Glenn, the fire truck is going to be custom, and I'm assuming because of the height of the doors in the station, that it's going to be lower than a typical truck today. So my question is this, does that lower the ground clearance? And is the truck four-wheel drive? Because with our mud seasons, I know my road probably wouldn't have accommodated something carrying 5,000 gallons two weeks ago. How does it work into what we really need?
So no, the truck won't be four-wheel drive because that just adds astronomical height, and they can't even produce a truck that would do that for us and still fit in a building. Yes, we had, because of your, the EPA Clean Air Act and the amount of exhaust rectifications they've had to do to get diesel engines to pass emissions or meet the emissions, that has actually added to the height of the truck, which makes going with a commercial line truck like the ones we all have now, or the ones that we do have, it just won't fit the building. Where this one, we're looking at carrying up to 1,500 gallons of water, so we're hoping that, that we can get through the mud, you know? We generally keep this time of year at least one truck chained up out of the three of them, so that's, that's our goal. And Highway Department's good about helping us get where we need to go. Whenever we've called, they've come out of bed, so we certainly hope that that remains.
What's the newest truck? What's the newest truck that sits in the firehouse today? What's the newest truck that sits in the firehouse today?
Okay, so the question, what year's the newest truck? That's a 2000, yeah. It's a year 2000. NFPA hopes or their goal is to have your front lines engine replaced at 20-year mark. Sooner if you can, but by 20 years. So that's, hence why the truck committee started in 2018, when that newest truck would be 20 years old to have it replaced. But even working on this now, given COVID and how much manufacturing is set back, there's a, there's a two-year wait for any, anything that's manufactured, whether it's ambulances, fire trucks, any specialty vocation vehicles, you're looking at a couple of years at best.
What is ARPA? What is ARPA? What is, you're using the acronym, ARPA. What is that?
So I believe that's the ARPA, the American Recovery, and I can't remember the, the P Act.
American Recovery and Protection Act.
So the ARPA funds that they're talking, the American Recovery and Protection Act. So, that money, I believe it all, what, it come out in right around COVID?
Any other questions for our fire chief Glenn? Good job, Glenn, thank you. Thank you for all you do. Okay, we have a motion before us to see if the town will vote to raise $20,000 by taxation to be placed in the capital expenditure fire fund, fire department reserve toward a future pumper. Any further discussion? Seeing no discussion, I've restated the motion already, you all get it, to raise $20,000 by taxation. A yes vote passes the article, the motion, a no vote defeats it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. I don't know, two microphones, is that screwing anything up? Sorry. Okay. Moving on to Article 12. Article 12, to see if the town will vote to raise $20,866 by taxation for the support of social services as recommended by the Social Services Committee. That's on pages 21 and 22 in the center of your book. I will entertain a motion. Okay, it's removed in seconds. A discussion? Talk to me. Anybody? Hearing no discussion, we have a motion before us to see if the town will raise $20,866 by taxation for the support of social services as recommended by the Social Services Committee. Although, a yes vote will pass it, a no vote will defeat it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Article 13, to see if the town will vote to raise $50,000 by taxation to be held in a reserve account for the repair of the Stone Arch Bridge on Back Wyndham Road contingent upon successful award of grant funds. I believe the reserve fund is on page 17, and the towns... This is through the Townsend Historical Society, they're the ones that are kind of working on it, and their report's on page 30. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir. You're tall, bend down, sorry.
Yep, I'll bend down or...
Or bring it up, there you go. Nice AV skills.
Not in the totals included in the reserve was the amount we appropriated last year.
Right.
So there's another $50,000. So we have about $240,000 currently set aside for, if contingent upon successful award of the grant funds, to work on the Back Wyndham Bridge. At the moment, I'm not sure that there... We have a real plan of where we're going to do that. Last I heard, there was a number of about $750,000 to do a restoration of that. But I don't think we've put it out to bid as far as would be required to actually do the work. I like the Follett Bridges, the Stone Arch there and Back Wyndham Road is beautiful, but the bridge is still functional. We have not heard from the state that it is insufficient or is damaged or is not going to be able to be used. And $50,000 to continue to add $50,000 to the reserve every year. We just talked about the need to add 20,000 for fire trucks. There are a lot of other things that I think might have a higher priority than 50,000 going into a reserve fund, when we don't really have a finalized plan for the bridge. And also questioning whether it really makes sense at this point to do it from a restoration perspective as opposed to just keeping it functional. 50,000, we could make a very good dent in a bond for a new firehouse or for work to fix the town hall. You know, there are lots of good things we'd like to do, but finances are obviously a scarce resource. And to put $50,000 back into this beyond the 240 that's already there seems like too much money for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlie.
Charles Marchant, president of the Townsend Historical Society. There actually is a plan, and I'll review it with you here. We applied for and received a Save America's Treasures grant for $221,000. It has to be used by September 30th of 2025. With the support of the town, pledged funds toward this project from potential donors, the grant, we are within reach of the estimated repair budget of around $800,000, like was talked about with the fire department, since the COVID issues, costs of doing projects like this have increased. We're confident that we will raise the remaining money with the support of this article and the successful reception of grants that we're applying for. We've talked with the select board about putting together the bid plan, and that is going to be done sometime in 2023, potentially for the work to begun... To begin sometime perhaps after April 1st of 2024, so the issue of plowing and snow removal's not a concern. As we've stated in the past, no bid will be accepted for completion until all the remaining funds have been secured or promised. When I say promised, we've had a couple of donors who have said they will pledge money to this project, and we're working out a procedure for them to do that with a form. They want to be kept in the loop as to how this meeting goes. And with that, we're confident to go to the select board and ask them to begin the process of drawing up the bid specifications for this project. So, that's where we're headed. We wanted to do this in 2024, so that we have still another year to have it completed by the 2025 deadline. That's a matching grant, we have the match, so we've met all the criteria for that. There's a few questions that have to be answered. The state historic preservation officer has appointed a person to work with us, and that person happens to be a certified stone mason, but they can't bid on the project because they're a state employee, so there's no conflict of interest. That's working out to our favor. And so we're moving forward with this, and we would request you support this article, and I hope that this will be the last time we'll ask you for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Chris Groetz-Cook. I didn't grow up here, and back home, they did not fix the bridges on schedule. They decided it was too much money, and so they didn't put fixing the budget... Fixing the bridges in the budget. And all of a sudden, all the bridges needed repair. This was a long time ago. Jeanne and I were dating at that point, and we've been married 40 years. But let me tell you, not having the bridges maintained on schedule is a nightmare.
Any other discussion? Hearing no discussion. Yep, in the back. You're going to have to really yell. It's the TV that has to hear you. Did everybody hear that? It's... The question is, once the restoration is done, will the load capacity be increased?
Lifted.
Lifted. Oh, it's restricted now, will that restriction be lifted?
I'm going to have to say that I don't have the answer to that question. Steve's gone, but the weight limit was approved by the state, and the arch is basically determined to be structurally sound. It's the approaches that need to be worked on, along with the four corners. Once all that work's done, I guess I'd have to ask a structural engineer as to whether that would change the weight limit. So I can't answer that specifically, but I can try to find out. Well, the issue, if you approach that bridge from either direction, you're coming down a hill, and if you notice the way the pavement goes, you go down and then up and then down. And what we've been told is vehicles, especially trucks, by applying their brakes coming either direction, place stress against the bridge, which if that's... Once that's smoothed out, and you would just go across the bridge smoothly, I would suspect the weight limit could be changed. But they're concerned that the movement of a large truck, as it breaks down, is actually pushing against the pavement and then could possibly weaken the arch. I think if you go look under that bridge, it's a pretty fantastic structure, and the fact that it supports the weight that it does support, including the one on Simpsonville, where you have 18-wheelers going across it all the time, but that's a flat surface as opposed to a surface that's got dips in it. That's what I've been told. I'm not a... I'm a gravestone stone mason, but not a Stone Arch Bridge stone mason. But I'll check into that. It makes sense to me, but I'll check into it.
Thank you. Now, when I go over the bridge, I'm going to pay more attention. Any other discussion? Seeing no other discussion, we have a motion before us to see if the town will raise $50,000 by taxation to be held in a reserve account for the repair of the Stone Arch Bridge on Back Wyndham Road contingent upon successful award of grant funds. No other discussion? Hearing no other discussion, we'll entertain a vote. A yes vote will pass the motion, and no vote will defeat the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
I believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Thank you. Article... I hate Roman numerals. Nine, to see if the vote... The town will vote to authorize the select board to acquire land by gift or purchase for municipal forest to promote reforestation, water conserva... Water conservation and good forestry practices. So moved by Irv, second? Somewhere? There you go. Thank you, thank you. Discussion? Kind of boilerplate? Where did I see this picked up? Was it the Vermont Digger? It was somewhere that I read, they picked up this article as being something magical. And this has been in our warning every year since I've been doing this. But it was somewhere, yeah. They had a big, long thing about it. Yes. Discussion? Will you allow her to speak? Anybody have any problems with her speaking? Just because we don't know if her town situation... Go.
The wording on this Article 14 says "by gift or purchase." The word "or" makes it unclear, because if it's a gift, next year this town will have to pay. If it's a purchase, next year we may get hit with the bill, which is a gift or...
It's either. Or.
Well, the discussion is, it should be divided maybe into two different things, because maybe some people here would like to receive it as a gift and be okay with it and vote yes, and maybe some would not like it to be a purchase, knowing that we might get a bill next year. When you put it all together with an "or," it makes it difficult to make a good decision well informed.
You want to speak, or you want me to do my thing? Because I have a solution to this, but if you want to talk first, go ahead.
The language in that article is prescribed by state law. It's not ambivalent, it's not... It is word-for-word what it says. So either you take it as a gift, or you're authorized to purchase this. It is what it is. There's nothing you can do to change it. So if you say yes, you're fine. You say no, you're fine. It just needs to be recorded.
Eugene. That's what you're authorizing, is what you're saying.
Yes, it has a confined... It has a confined usage. You can't not have it there. It has to be written on the warning. If you don't want it, vote no. That's it. Yes or no? No, gray. To see if the town will authorize the select board to acquire land by gift or purchase, not to build a house, not to build a fire department, not to do any of these things. It's to promote reforestation, water conservation, and good forestry practices. So they can't go out and buy a piece of land with the purpose of putting the fire department on it, I would think, because that's not what this authorizes.
Right, okay. No, I get it, I get it. Okay, so... Right, okay. This is a boilerplate kind of thing we do every year, and the select board has never stuck us in the back. However, there's a solution for this if you wanted to go that route. I don't know what the state would say about this, but we could divide the question if you really wanted to. And you can say that, you know, you could do it, two questions that we... Where is it? Or. That, you know, that we do one by gift, and then we do one vote by purchase. And you can approve the gift but not approve the purchase, if you wanted to divide that. I don't know about state boilerplate issues and things like that, but again, I'm here to serve you guys and what you want to do. We voted on this every year since I've been here, just to let you know. Yes.
In general, you're correct. We can't go out and arbitrarily purchase something without it being recorded in here and what you voted on. This just deals with forestry. So if there was a tract of land that somebody wanted to give to us, we could accept it. If you say no, we can't accept it, and they can... They'll have to go about their way.
That is correct. Okay. So what she was saying was, if the money isn't in the budget, they... They wanted to buy something for a million dollars, they couldn't do it. Correct. And that the money has to be in the budget. And that the money has to be in the budget. So I guess what you're saying is nothing can really be purchased unless it's brought back to the town for the money. Yes?
Chris Groats Cook. Don't I recall that when we bought Taft Meadows, that we had a special meeting to approve that?
Yes, yes, I do remember the, yes.
So historically, that's what we've done.
Right, but Tax Meadow was not for reforestation. That was purchased, I think, for the fire department. That was originally purchased to build a new firehouse. Municipal building, sorry, a municipal building, correct.
So our tradition is that you come and ask us.
Yep. Yes. Okay, what's your pleasure? Yes. What?
Why is nobody... Why don't we vote on what we've done?
What? Wait, I didn't hear you. What was it?
Yeah.
Oh, he called a question. Okay. Well, nobody else had the floor, so that's legal. Okay, so if the question's been called, we can't have any more discussion. What?
I'll check.
Okay, there's a second. It's a two-thirds vote to close debate. Do we want to take that two-thirds vote, or are we done with discussion? Done with discussion? All those in favor closing debate, raise your hand. Down. All those in favor that want to keep talking, raise your hand. Obviously. Okay, debate is now closed. We go to the vote. The vote is to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to acquire land by gift or purchase for municipal forest to promote forestation, water conservation, and good forestry practices. A yes vote passes the motion, a no vote defeats the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I believe the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. And thank you. For somebody that's not been here before, having, I hate to say it, but having these things brought up because we're so used to just moving along is actually a good thing. So thank you. Okay. Article 15. To transact any other non-binding business to properly come before this meeting. I don't know why it has to be properly, because we can talk about anything now. Let's start with Charlie. You want to come up here? Okay.
First, I have two things. First, thank you for your support of the article on the bridge. And if anybody is not a member of the society, the historical society, and wants to, wants to join, or you know someone that would like to donate to this project, I have some envelopes here, and there's also some brochures over on the table. We meet the third Monday of each month down at Robert de Grignier's glass studio, 5:00 PM. If anybody wants to join our meeting, we welcome participation. And then the second thing, Steve left, but I just, I don't know if there was any plan to thank him for his service as a select board member, but I can speak on behalf of the Cemetery Commission. Every time I've asked Steve to help with a little project in the cemetery, he's been very willing to help us, and also with the historical society. The signs that you see on the bridges and Scott Bridge that we've received a grant for, if you haven't looked at them, go look at them, there's a lot of information on them. And if you've got a fancy phone, you can put it up to the QR code, and it'll tell you all kinds of things. But Steve and the town crew helped install those, and the signs have received a lot of use and a lot of comments on how nice they look. So I'd like to at least acknowledge Steve for his great work as a select board member. Thank you.
Just want to thank the auditors for putting together an attractive and interesting town report. Just want to thank the auditors for putting together an attractive and interesting town report.
My wife did that for a couple of years, it's a lot of work.
Just to make it clear, the auditors didn't have anything to do with it. Connie, Helen, where's Helen? There she is. And Alanka did all the work on putting those numbers together, and the artwork, all of those things, they worked quite a lot, put quite a lot of time into it.
Alanka, did you want to say something? Wait.
I just want to say that we are, there's a committee kind of taking Linda Sperry's lead for all the work she did for the newsletter, the church newsletter that we used to get. So with Linda Sperry's guidance, we have a committee coming together to hopefully put out a Townsend newsletter. So we're looking for people that would like to help, you know, even ideas, even if you don't want to help, but you have ideas of things you'd like to see. We'd like a calendar, that kind of stuff. We have a committee, our next meeting is the 21st of March at 4:00 in Town Hall, and we would really love anyone that has ideas or any input to come and help with that. And with that, we also, if you have a business and would like to advertise in the newsletter, that'd be wonderful. We're also kind of following Dummerston's lead with their newsletter. We're sponsors, just individuals, we can put your name in if you want to have, you know, to help kind of have it sent out, have more community, you know, understanding what's going on in the community, and just kind of coming together. So again, it would be, I think it's Tuesday, March 21st at 4:00 PM at Town Hall. Thank you.
Nice to have a newsletter. Again, community, right? Okay. Any, yes, come on up. Any other non-binding business?
I'm not sure this, first of all, I want to add to what Alanka said. We're also hoping to have everyone get the newsletter who's in West Townsend, because we just couldn't make that happen earlier, but it's really important to remember, when you're living over here, that West Townsend's part of Townsend, too. So we plan to have everybody in town, and maybe some of Wyndham, get the newsletter once we get it going. The other item is, I'm not sure, I feel like I need to talk to this direction.
Go ahead.
On page four, it has the town grand juror as Maggie, and we never voted on her. I don't want her to be left out.
It's in appointed position now.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Right. If you look, I noticed that, too. The town grand, the town town agent and the grand juror, we're not voting for anymore. One of them's been eliminated, and one of them is now in appointed position. So I was confused about that as well. Yes, sir!
Why aren't we voting to set the next town meeting?
Oh, that is not in there, is there? Or was it?
Not in the article, not in the article.
That is a good point, and that is a bad thing, because you're supposed to do that. Is it not in there? I cut mine, I cut mine up, so I don't have it. Is it not in there? No, it is not. Okay, well, then we won't vote on that. We'll see what happens. Maybe we have to have a special meeting to set the town meeting next year. I expect you all to arrive for that. I'll be here. We might have to do that, as a matter of fact. We might have to have a special meeting to warn next year's meeting. Okay? What?
Can we make a motion?
It's not warned.
Oh.
It's not warned. You can make the motion, it'd be non-binding, we'd still have to have a special meeting. Okay, so, doesn't matter. When is the next meeting? First Tuesday, anybody know the date? The fifth? Tuesday, March 5th, 2024. I remember reading 1984 before 1984, and the year 2000 was the future. We're supposed to be flying around in space cars. And now it's 2024. Unbelievable. Okay, where was I? Confused. We'll talk about that other issue. Very good point, thank you for bringing it up. Anything else? Non-binding business? Okay. First off, oh, more, go ahead.
I think we should have a round of applause to thank the select board and the planning commission, and everybody else who works so hard for the town.
That was the next thing I was gonna say. Now what do I do? Thank you to everybody who's made this event possible after such a long hiatus. In a new building, it was difficult. In a new format, too, because we don't have the school, so we don't have lunch. I thought it went rather smoothly. If there's no other business to come before the meeting, one more thing. Yes?
There is currently a job opening on the road crew in Townsend. Also wanted to emphasize Stephen's commitment and service to the town. He does a great job. He's writing grants, he's under trucks working on them, he's managing a crew. But there's a job opening, if anybody knows anybody with the CDL who wants to apply. Also want to emphasize Glenn, what he said about the fire department. We also should, as a town, start thinking about the future. Raising funds for a new building, something that's in the process, obviously, but we should stay receptive to spending money on our fire department. Proximity to care centers, the hospital, multiple schools are downtown. It would be catastrophic if something were to happen to our economy, so we really need to be prescient about that. And I appreciate pushing back about large amounts of money, but we should think forward regarding that. Thanks, guys.
Any other discussion? Talk? Okay. Okay. If there's no other business, come before the meeting. I declare the 2023 Townsend Town Meeting closed. Thank you all for making it happen. Anybody that's been elected, please head over to the town clerk if you need to be sworn in. Okay? Elected officials, please get sworn in. Thank you, everybody, for putting up with me. Have a great year.